Want to take this live here? Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and call the order. The city council meeting for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Can you join us, please, for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Jamie.
Kurt Andrews.
Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Jeff Delkey, not here. Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc. Darla Leclerc. Jay Remicker. Bonnie Shimilunas.
Here.
Adam Washke.
Here.
Thank you, Jamie. We do have a quorum. I can give you an update. Bill is having surgery today, so let's keep him in our thoughts and prayers. Was successful, but he is recuperating, and Darla has been with him. So the Leclercs are out tonight. We have not heard if Jay or Jeff are going to join us remotely. I've not heard. Has anybody else heard? Okay. So we'll assume that they will not, and we'll move on to number four, or number five, which is really, there's no public hearing tonight. So we're going to go to number six. Number six is input from the public. And again, Greg or Jamie, did you get contacted by anybody in the public to address any of the agenda issues tonight?
Neither of us had any contacts requesting that.
Okay. So no communications. Do we have anyone in the audience who'd like to have input on the agenda tonight? If so, you can go to the podium, my right, your left, state your name and address, and address council. We'll let you do that. Okay. Let's move on. Number seven, council communications, letters and other communication from citizens. Anybody want to share anything? Mark?
I had a citizen ask me, evidently, they were following several different Facebook pages, and they asked me, what is bribing? Were we bribed as city council? And I guess I'll turn to Jack, our attorney, regarding the donation of the $5,000. Can you answer that? What's the legal status of that?
Hold on, Jack. If you can repeat that in a second.
I don't see how a donation to the city could constitute bribery. Bribery under the statute, to paraphrase, and I can't recall the exact language, is where an official is offered or accepts some sort of personal advantage, money or whatever, to do something in violation of his or her duties. If the reference is to the gift, which was, I guess, announced by Darla Leclerc at a meeting, a donation to the city, I don't see how that would constitute bribery under the statute, if I understand the circumstances correctly.
And maybe to close the loop, I'm going to ask Mr. Buckley, that public donation that was made, $5,000, where did that go, Greg?
Sure. At the council meeting on August 23rd, Mrs. Leclerc presented a check for $25, excuse me, for $5,000, which she represented was in support of the Central Park West project as a donation from she and her husband, Bill Leclerc, council member Leclerc. That was deposited the next day in the city's capital projects fund for parks and recreation to the revenue line item titled donations, which would be the appropriate accounting for that. That is where any, typically any donation for parks and recreation facilities would go. As this particular project advances, it's certainly possible the city would establish a standalone designated capital project fund for it, but in point of fact, the check was made out to the city of Two Rivers, and it was duly deposited, as our financial system would show, in the Parks and Rec Capital Fund as a donation revenue.
Jeff? Thank you. Any other input from public? Adam?
I received a communication that was, wanted to thank our Parks and Rec crew at the North Side Cemetery, specifically the North Side Cemetery, and what a great job they did all summer long on keeping up on the grass cutting, the trimming, and everything that went along with that cemetery. They were very impressed.
I have to concur. I think you guys do a fantastic job of maintaining the cemetery. Thank you for that.
Just to chime in, they did it this year with constantly dealing with a worker shortage, just like everybody else out there. So it's great to hear that feedback from the public.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that, Adam. Any other input from citizens that anybody wants to share? Okay, seeing none, let's move to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, committees. Before I go to A and B, I've got one that I was asked to give an update on, so I'll do that, but I'll wait to see if anybody else has anything they want to report out on first. Anybody? Mark?
Reminder, this Thursday evening.
You get close to the mic.
Reminder to the community, Thursday evening at 6:00 is the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting, so anyone who's interested in that, please attend.
Thank you, Mark. Any other committee or updates anybody wants to share? Okay, I'll move to the logowear request that was done by one of our council individuals who's not here tonight, but we'll make sure we get a copy of this to him. So if you could take one of these, Adam, and pass it down. Bonnie, I'll bring yours. This is really a report on the logowear sales program. We update this on the quarterly work sessions, and we talk about branding and marketing, but because this was specifically asked, I just want to walk you through some of this stuff. So first of all, if you, I'm going to talk about three things. One, inception to date. Two is logowear partners, and three is the logowear process, to make sure we're managing correctly. Greg, thank you, I'm sorry. We're managing the assets of the city. So let's move to the second page right away, and you can actually see when we began this process, and the logowear actually began in August of 2020, when we launched the brand, and we trademarked the logo, and said there's an opportunity for us to raise some funds to support some initiatives in the city and promote our city. You can see what we ended up doing in 2020, and I want you to concentrate on two lines. One is the TR logowear sales, and two is the logowear purchases. One's going to look at this and say, how come your purchases don't equal your sales? Because purchases are inventory, and sales are what you actually sell, and the margin is the difference. But I want to jump over to where we're at so far, inception to date. So go all the way to the right, and you'll see that so far in logowear sales, since we launched this, we've had $18,237 in logowear sales with six different partners, and I'll talk about that in a second. The purchases for logowear have been $22,909.71. That's at cost, not at wholesale. That's at cost. Wholesale is what we market up when we sell it to our partners, and that's the profit we make. That $22,909 is also inventory that we have in all six partners, which I want to share with you, and just, that'd be the next thing. So the partners right now are Schrader's, Lighthouse Inn, Renee's Chocolate and Popcorn, Fatso's, Woodland Dunes, Ice Clouds. Bashal Iskabebl's actually paid for their inventory, so they have nothing on consignment. And I just heard from Tanya today at Village Inn, she would like us to put some inventory in her facility, as well as, we just sold a bunch of it at Celebrate Two Rivers, and we'll be selling more logowear at the Ethnic Fest. So I want you to look at, actually go to page three where it shows inventory, because the sales don't match the purchases, and here's why. Because I, we have $8,178 at cost, not at wholesale, not at margins, but at cost of inventory in our six areas. Schrader's has inventory, Lighthouse, Fatso's, Renee's, Woodland Dunes, Ice Clouds, and we have back stock that's here in the closet on the third floor that we backfill orders when a partner needs them. You're going to say, so that $8,178 is part of the $22,000 purchases we made. So if you say we still own inventory, and your sales are 18,000, we're doing well. Let's go to how the process works, because I think people need to also understand the process and how we set it up. It is working very well. One, we work with our partners in stock inventory on a consignment agreement. What that means is, they don't necessarily have, if they got $2,000 worth of inventory, they're not paying for that until they sell it. That's what consignment is. They're responsible for all the inventory that's in their facility. They're giving us the space, they're marketing it, they're getting people to buy Two Rivers wear, and they're helping promote the city and the brand. They're responsible for reimbursing the city of Two Rivers for all inventory variances monthly at the wholesale price established for each item. Each item has a wholesale price. So let me give you an example. If I buy a t-shirt for $5, and we sell it to them for $10, and they sell it to the public for $15, they're making five, we're making five. See how that works? It's a win-win. The invoices are provided and signed by partners and its TR city rep for all shipments. This binder right here has every invoice ever delivered and signed for, and copies made by the representative at the location, along with the person giving it. So it's an asset. They're accepting the inventory, we're taking that inventory and saying they have it now, they're responsible. So they sign for every one of them. At the end of every month, they are given a inventory request, and the partner needs to do an inventory. And based on the sales, if I start with 10 pieces, and I do an inventory at the end of the month, and I have five pieces, I owe the city a check for those five pieces I sold. If they were stolen, if an employee took it and didn't pay for it, it doesn't matter. They're responsible for those five pieces that are no longer in stock. That's what consignment is. So every month, we do that. They sign that they did the inventory, the city TR rep signs. They cut a check. That check is brought immediately to Lisa. Lisa makes a copy of that check, and that check is deposited right away to Dave Buss, and that's, this report is from Dave. So that's how it works. No different than if an employee of Two Rivers buys a shirt that's here, they again write Lisa a check, Lisa deposits that check, relieves the inventory, and making sure it's paid for, because it is an asset of the city, and we take that seriously. So at the end of every month, the on-hand inventory sheet with all additional deliveries that happened that month, and let me give you an example, we had four deliveries last month, the month of August, to Schrader's. They sign for every invoice every time we drop product off. They call and say, hey, I need more of this, or I need more of that, or do you have some of this? I'm getting requests for that. So they do the inventory, and again, whatever's sold, they write a check to the city of Two Rivers. Number six, the ending inventory of each month becomes the beginning inventory of the next month. So we just take the inventory numbers and shift them over, and it's on an Excel spreadsheet, so they know this is my beginning inventory, and anything they order has to be added to that inventory again. So at the end of the month, they'll do an inventory. Copies of all invoices, again, are signed by both parties, and copies are kept on their files, along with our files. Additional styles, seasonality, are designed by Whitney with the brand committee helping in the selection process, along with the partners' input on what new items should be considered. After all, they're given a space, and they're trying to drive revenue, as well as promote the city of Two Rivers. So if they believe, for example, fall's coming, and they could use some hoodies, and we're out of stock on hoodies, we have to then make a decision, do we buy them, and put them in there, knowing that they're going to turn around and sell them. That's where Ericsson's provides, in a quote, confirmation on in-stock styles, prices, and availability, and they order additional stock, and orders are placed. We manage the inventory and spread it around wherever we can. Note, as we add more items, additional inventory is needed. So for example, we started with one, Schrader's. We're now up to six. There's inventory in every one of those locations. They're going to have inventory at Village Inn. That's going to come out of the back. It may not be enough for what they need, but it's going to be what we start with. We may have to order more. They help market the city, they help keep the stock fresh. We want to make sure that they're happy, and it's a win-win for us, and it's a win-win for them. And they're helping us make profits, and they're helping us market the city. We do place larger orders for logowear, when we had the logowear tent for Celebrate Two Rivers, I think we sold $1,100 worth of logowear on that Saturday, and we have the upcoming Ethnic Festival where we sell direct. That wholesale price becomes a lot different when we sell direct, because we can sell our markup where we need to have our markup. And we're working to expand, I mentioned, we're working with Cobblestone, they're checking with their corporate office, and Village Inn, because Lighthouse does very, very well with the inventory they have, because they have a lot of visitors who want to grab Two Rivers' logowear stuff and take it with them. And that could be hats, caps, coffee mugs, whatever it'll also be. So that's the update in how logowear works, and how the inventory is managed, and how the process works, and I just wanted to make sure this council is aware. It is double-checked and triple-checked, and there is no, as someone might say, vacation fund being delivered by anybody in City Hall, or anybody on council, or anybody in the branding committee managing the logowear. It's all about helping our partners, our businesses, and helping the community.
I would just add, if I might, it has proceeded as well as it has, and is out to so many retailers because of a prodigious amount of volunteer time by Kurt as the chair of the Branding and Marketing Committee, and as long as he and/or other members of that committee deliver inventory, deliver checks, and the accounting back to the City Hall, because it does take some staff time, but what has really made this work is the amount of volunteer time that's gone into it, and the ability to continue doing that will, with council's blessing, would still depend on a fair amount of volunteer time. Otherwise, the numbers would get upside down pretty quickly.
And don't forget, the seed money started from room tax dollars. So we didn't start with city tax dollars, it was room tax dollars that went into this to continue to market to tourists and market our brand. Are there any questions? Mark?
First of all, thank you for re-explaining this, because you talked about this prior. So thank you for re-explaining it. It's unfortunate, I think the comment came because they were watching the check records, which city council gets every meeting, we get a list of written checks, which didn't tell the story. That only showed the inventory purchases, it didn't show any deposits or activity. So thank you for re-explaining this, and it's a productive process. Second comment I want to make is that not only does it work and promote the city, but that's walking advertisement for logos, designs, and names of Two Rivers on every one of these products we're selling in our community, and they go beyond the community, so it's getting great exposure for Two Rivers.
Thank you. I see.
I can speak to that. I happen to have, okay, I go to Renaissance Fair every summer several times, and I was waiting to get in about a month ago, and I had a Snow Fest, Two Rivers backpack on, and I had several people walk up to me and either ask me, and somebody goes, hey, I used to live in Two Rivers, do they still have Snow Fest? I said, yes, they do, and you should come up for it.
Yes, you're right. And they do a great job also, and they, in fact, we have, we co-sold logowear at Celebrate Two Rivers. Snow Fest had some leftover wear, they joined with us, and we allowed us to push that out. So that's great. It is all about branding. It's all about recognition.
Oh, by the way, Ren Fair is down on the border of Illinois and Wisconsin.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, just in case.
Any other questions? Greg, I'll have these. I'd love, Jamie, if you don't mind, making sure copies get to the rest of the council who aren't here. It can go in their in-basket if possible, that'd be great. And again, if they have any questions, please tell them to direct it my way.
And Jamie, if we could get that out electronically as well tomorrow, because they have it quicker.
Okay, thanks. So we'll move to B, and B is other. So you're probably wondering what other is. Well, other is me. Other is me reading a letter, and I wanted to dress this personally. So it's with heavy heart that I must tender my resignation from city council, effective end of day 9/10/2021. These past three and a half years, serving our community on city council has been a privilege and an honor. It allowed me to represent the citizens of Two Rivers, who elected me not once, but twice, and being trusted to serve them in improving our community. I love the city, I'm proud to call my birthplace, and I'm extremely proud of our accomplishments to help turn the corner for positive economic growth that could only continue to move our community forward, benefiting all who live here. My wife and I have recently made the decision to invest in Two Rivers by starting a new business here, to walk the talk on making an economic difference, and our vision with several investing partners is to ignite our downtown business community. This major financial commitment allows us to serve our community in a different capacity, but still one with hope and an aspirational vision for generations to come. Stay tuned, as we'll be announcing more details soon. We've only been working on it a year and a half. I only hope and pray with the alignment of our current and future councils and service organizations that they can help unify and positively grow this wonderful community. What we say, how we say it, in all arenas matters. So let's stay positive, Two Rivers. Thanks for your support, and I look forward to being part of things to come, serving on committees where I can continue to add value. I'll be meeting with Adam on Thursday to talk about transition. He didn't know what the Thursday meeting was, now he does. And I just want, and I'll work with Greg on what we need to do to be able to transition any other committees that are out there. So my last day will be Friday, but we'll work through the transition this week. So God bless, stay true to two, and thank you.
This obviously wasn't an agenda item per se, so, but I would just offer the comment, because council members may be, and viewers might be wondering about this. As far as succession to the council president position, the vice president, as I understand, will, will move to the president position for the balance of the term. Our ordinance does not contain specific language about succession. When there's not specific language, we follow Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's rules provides for the advancement of the vice president to president, unless there are specific provisions in the bylaws of the organization in question, in this case, our city ordinances, to the contrary. So Adam is effectively, as of the time on Friday that Kurt cited, the council president. While obviously I'll consult with the new council president about your next regular agenda, it will include election of a vice president at the council's discretion, and guidance as far as, there'll be a memo from the city attorney as far as what the council's options under the statute are for filling the unexpired balance of Mr. Andrews' term on council. There are some options there. We will lay those out clearly for you at that time. And council, of course, can also act on committee vacancies. With the exception of the council, committees of council, Kurt currently serves on Personnel and Finance, that vacancy will be filled by an appointment by the council president, as is the case with our standing committees of city council. So not to talk too much there, but I know this raises several questions. I thought it was important we answer those. Thank you.
By the way, it was with a heavy heart that we, we made this decision, but we're going to, we'll be rocking and rolling in Two Rivers in a whole different way, as I said before, so it'll be a good thing. Stay tuned. All right, let's go to city manager report. Greg, you are up, and you have some invited guests?
No invited guests this evening.
Okay, then I'll check that off the list.
That's just a placeholder tonight, we did not, we had such a crowd of invited guests last time, and it was great having them, but not tonight. Just to go to my report, first of all, you have a resolution on your agenda tonight, but we, we take a moment tonight in memory of Bill Zarn. Bill passed away on August 23rd. He had served 17 years as a crossing guard, most of that time at the corner of 34th and Tannery. He was a crossing guard for 17 years. His wife Lynn, for a lesser time, was also a city crossing guard. So we salute Bill's service protecting our kids and express our heartfelt sympathies to the family. Council will have the opportunity to vote on a resolution that Chief Kohlmeier has prepared. As far as status and update reports, pleased to say that the 24th Street Reconstruction Project is going well. The grass and a whole lot of weeds, too, are growing in the terrace areas along the street. There should be a communication going out yet this month to residents about tree planting. That, right now, is a little up in the air as to whether that will be a fall or spring thing, but the city does have money in its tree planting budget to address street trees on that street, and to the extent it may be possible on 25th and Madison. But 24th Street essentially is a wrap. 25th and Madison, which were let as one contract, on the 25th Street component, the contractor last week completed most all of the driveway approaches and sidewalks, and they're scheduled to perform the restoration work along the terraces and give it a final sweep this week. Madison Street, a little farther behind, not much, though. The contractor should be finishing up the underground utility work this week, some of the private service lateral cutovers, the last part of the storm sewer installation, and they are scheduled right now to begin grading and gravelling of the street surface next week in preparation for paving work that we would expect to see later in September. So for once, it looks like we may be wrapping up street projects before there are snowflakes in the air. Unless they're in the air at the end of September, we don't want to go there. So they're coming along well. I know there have been some questions in follow-up. If any council members have any questions, feel free to relay them to my office or the engineering department. Just an update on our vehicle leasing program. Council, with this year's budget authorized embarking on a program with Enterprise Fleet Management. They were able to present some pretty compelling numbers about basically acquiring vehicles on a lease purchase with the different government purchase discounts that are available, and fleet discounts. We got off to a good start. The only thing, of course, that's thrown a monkey wrench into it is the shortage of microchips, which has wreaked havoc with auto industry inventory and delivery. So at this point, only nine of the 21 vehicles that were scheduled for replacement in this first year of the program have been received. We're hoping, not sure, but hoping a couple more might be delivered, but for the rest of them, well, we're deferring a little bit longer, the replacement of some of those vehicles. And council, starting with the Finance Committee, will be seeing a revised plan for 2022, given that we've got a backlog. And who knows? We're hearing it could be a year out before all the supply chain glitches get addressed and for truck and auto market. I listed there the nine vehicles that have been acquired, four Chevy Equinoxes, and I believe five Chevy 2500 series pickups. Just one anecdotal thing we wanted to share, one of the finer vehicles we had to retire out is a 2009 GMC single cab or regular cab 2500 series pickup with plow that was purchased in 2009 for $24,500. The city used it for 12 years. It had been driven about 60,000 miles. At the front end of this program, the estimated resale for that vehicle was $9,000. Of course, the used car and truck market has changed a lot since November, December of last year. That vehicle, which has been replaced with a new Chevy 2400 with a crew cab, sold for $18,000 at Enterprises Auction. So that's enough proceeds to pay for the first two years of the lease payments and maintenance costs on the replacement vehicle. So just an FYI, we're hurting because of the market conditions with automotive. We're benefiting on the few vehicles that we are turning over. We're not looking to get a real handsome amount of money for those two 1994 Ford Torres that were retired out of inspections and engineering. So just an FYI there. The water utility, we had some stuff out on Facebook. I think Ross Blaha has addressed this previously with council. Last week, they began a citywide unidirectional flushing program. We've always flushed hydrants, not always with a unidirectional approach to things. In other words, the water utility has really taken a look at the distribution system and is doing flushing in a manner that the water is consistently pushing in one direction, which should be most effective for removing solids and not ending up with areas where there's a lot of residual sediment left in the system. And this will be carried out over the balance of the month of September. Like I say, started last week, what part of town did you start in, Ross? Near the South Side Tower last week. There haven't been any customer complaint calls come in, and that's kind of unusual with hydrant flushing, because normally it does stir up a fair amount of sediments. But if they're all, with this unidirectional approach, if hopefully most of the sediments are getting discharged out of hydrants, they aren't ending up clogging your strain, your aeration filter in the, in the kitchen sink, or ending up in your laundry or other places. So good management of that resource by the water utility. Update on the Central Park West Project, just wanted to make council and the public aware that the next meeting of the Citizen Planning Committee for this project is set for next week, Wednesday, September 15th, 6:00 PM here in council chambers. That is a public meeting. Information about the meeting, the agenda will be Information about the, the meeting, the agenda will be posted, as are our other public meetings. Based on the council's action on August 23rd, authorizing design work to proceed to the 30% level on the project, the committee will be continuing to refine the conceptual design and the preliminary cost estimate for the project. And I would, would note that among the things I expect the committee to talk about with our consultants will be addressing the size and configuration of the audience area in front of the proposed new bandstand. Do we need the trees that are shown in that area? Do we need that sidewalk that gives symmetry to the park but may reduce the seating area? What about, to what extent will there be concrete pavement in front of the stage? Revisiting, at least further discussing, the proposed elimination of West Park Street in front of the community house. The council's resolution a while back directing, or approving that this project proceed did give the charge to look at parking that would be displaced by eliminating that stretch of street. I think the other thing is, you know, are there ways that maybe seasonally vehicles could at least pass through that area? So that, that will get some further study. They'll be looking at options for phasing the project. We all know it has an ambitious price tag. Doesn't mean that that's the final cost, doesn't mean that might be opportunities to phase it and ghost in certain improvements on the plan pending funding opportunities. And likewise, and I know council member Coach, who's on the committee along with council member Remaker, or Tracy, has given voice to the idea of looking at value engineering and where can we reduce project costs while maintaining the quality of the overall project? So, this is, this planning and design work is far from done and there is the opportunity for that dialogue, and I assure you that dialogue is going to take place. We've shared with the community out on the city's website, two- rivers, TWO-Rivers.org, some of the schematics of the park, like this view, which I always term "view from the southeast." Pretend you were on top of Schrader's Roof, looking down on the improved park. The left view, of course, is a winter view, and the right view, a summer view. And there's also some narrative out there on the city website that describes the basic elements of the project and the history of the planning for the project.
Greg, just to repeat then, the meeting in the, of the Planning Citizens Committee that's really started this whole plan and, credit to them for doing such a good job. The next meeting is this Wednesday, September 15th.
Next week, Wednesday.
Next week, Wednesday. September 15th at 6 o'clock.
Correct.
So it might be a great opportunity for some of the people who are engaging so actively on social media to take a look at attending that and, and listen to what all the components are instead of voicing an opinion in one piece of it.
Public input is welcome at those meetings.
Right, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. It's in your packets, an invitation. I would just remind folks that the ribbon cutting for the Point Beach Solar Project, just north of town here, will be next week, Thursday, no, I'm not, sorry, not next week, later this month, Thursday, September 23rd. Actually, it's at 10:30, but they're asking people to please be out there on site if you plan to attend by 10:00 AM on Thursday, the 23rd. Would just remind you that this 100-megawatt solar facility called Point Beach Solar is being constructed by Next Year Energy. Of course, they're the owners and operators of Point Beach Nuclear Plant, but it is based on a long-term purchase power contract with the city's wholesale energy supplier, WPPI Energy. So, we'll, we'll bid farewell to all of those Blatner Energy Contractor pickup trucks that have been filling up hotel and motel and restaurant and QuickTrip parking lots for the better part of a year and a half between the two solar projects. The other one, of course, was the Two Creek Solar Project that came online last fall. This will, will represent the new Point Beach Solar Project going online. WPPI Energy, which supplies Two Rivers and 50 other member utilities with energy, has made a big investment in our area. They contract for the purchase, I believe, of 110 megawatts of energy from Point Beach Nuclear, and they are now the basis with a 20-year purchase power contract for the construction that has taken place out at the Point Beach Solar Facility. So, would encourage council members to plan to attend. We'll, Lisa from my office will be getting an email out asking for our SVPs so we can acknowledge council members that are in attendance. Big stuff.
Might be a good idea if everyone that does attend wears sunscreen, too, so they don't get a sunburn.
That's right. Or aluminum foil, so you could reflect back to the solar panels.
Don't forget your sunglasses, is what you're also trying to say?
Okay. I've been asked to offer a few comments for the city, so you might want to drink a prodigious amount of coffee before going to it as well, more, so. Staffing update, the city is presently recruiting for crossing guards. Chief Kohlmeier, we need how many right now?
Two, anyway. So, if you'd like to serve the community, it's about 10 hours a week. It's, I think, about nine and a quarter an hour. Hours in the morning, hours in the afternoon, looking out for the welfare of young people crossing the streets, coming and going from school. Valuable positions, and like everybody else, we're scurrying around for help in that area. We also are continuing to recruit for a meal site coordinator at the senior center. That's up to 28 hours per week, and the position is eligible for part-time prorated benefits, including paid holidays, vacation and personal days. No insurance on that one, but prorated, paid time off. We also, in about a week, will have a vacancy in the position of part-time communications coordinator for the city. Whitney Freilich, whose name you've heard and, and whose products you've seen with some of our communication pieces, has accepted other employment in the Green Bay area. So we'll be looking to fill that position because she's contributed a lot of creative talent to, to many things that have been happening, especially with implementation of branding. And I believe, I didn't check with chief today, but we are still in final backgrounding for two finalist candidates for police officer positions. We have one current vacant position and we may, may be having another vacancy. We've been fortunate, you met two young men that joined the ranks of the TRPD two weeks ago. Yeah, three weeks ago, I guess, council meeting. Continue to, with our recruitment. Just kudos to everybody involved with a couple of recent events. Celebrate Two Rivers on Saturday, August 28th over at Walsh Field. We had a good turnout of volunteers there and also some great donations that helped underwrite the fireworks, the face painting and other activities. And then kudos to Chow Chong and the Wisconsin Kiteers and all the service groups that staff the concession stands. Congratulations on another great kites over Lake Michigan, out at Two Rivers High School this past weekend, Saturday and Sunday. I know that the organizers are eager, like most of the community, to see that event returned in the Shota Beach as soon as we have enough beach to accommodate. So let's hope the water keeps going down. Upcoming, we still have one more bands on the beach because Listening Party got bumped out of the schedule earlier this summer due to foul weather in the forecast. It wasn't one of those where the thunderstorm arrived just as they had set up. So they, in fact, changed dates and they will be down there this coming Sunday, the 12th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at the beach. So farewell to summer. September brings some of the very best weather down at the Shota, so bring your, bring your beach chair and come on out. I think if you're looking for a beverage, it might be a BYOB because I don't think the Rotary is doing beer sales for this one. And of course, a week from next weekend, Saturday, September 18th, is Two Rivers Ethnic Festival, brought to you by the Two Rivers Main Street Organization. Hey, if you, if you've got more electronic clutter, maybe it's in your basement, your garage, somewhere in your house, Two Rivers Water and Lights Fall Recycle Event is on Tuesday, the 21st, couple weeks out from today, at the Water and Light Building down at 1415 Lake Street, right across from McDonald's. You can find this information, there is a charge for many items, like light bulbs and what have you. There's no charge for things like microwaves, VCRs, computers, laptops, printers. That event going on from 7:30 in the morning until 5:00 PM, again, on the 21st. Time to declutter your electronics. It's amazing the quantity that gets delivered there each and every time they have one of these events. New signs at City Hall and in the council chambers sporting the, I'll still call it new, it's about a year old now, city logo. Those are a product of Metal Art of Wisconsin, Manitowoc-based business that did both the new logo immediately behind the council president and the one outside the building. I would add at, I think, a deeply discounted price to the city. It was a few hundred dollars for that investment. They're really quite handsome. Really, you look at the one up here, I'd say a, a work of art as much as signage. Nicely done. Room tax, I know we show you this graph every month. I like showing this graph because it shares some very good news. The goldenrod bar that you see there is monthly room tax receipts in 2021, year-to-date, and this table is through July because July room taxes are due to be turned into the city by the different lodging establishments by the end of August. You can see that for the first seven months of this year, that goldenrod bar on the graph for 2021 has exceeded the corresponding bars for 20, excuse me, for 2020, 2019 and 2018. If you, if you do the math up above, we have not seen a year where, at the end of July, we had more than, I think, more than 60,000 in revenues. Every one of those years was under 60,000 as of the end of July. This year, as of the end of July, $123,400. So we are on, we're easily on target for a $200,000 year in room tax collections. Again, 52% of that right now goes to the Manitowoc Area Visitor Convention Bureau under a cooperative marketing agreement. I dare say we'll go over 200, probably by a decent margin because of the Ryder Cup impact coming up in a couple of weeks because lodging in the area is full and I'm hearing rates that are amazing for us laypeople that don't travel the globe going to major golf events. So, but this is, this is good news. You know, to put it in perspective, in, although Manitowoc's room tax revenues came down quite a bit last year because of COVID-19 impacts, typical year, our neighboring city sees about 600,000, but our trend line is very, very positive. 2020 was a record year for Two Rivers in terms of room tax at 141,000. This year, topping 200,000. You know, that's not a massive amount of money going into the city's operating budget. It goes for promotion area-wide through the VCB, locally through our branding and marketing committee. In the budget, it also goes for maintaining the boulevards and the bike trails that are a major feature on our Memorial Drive entry. But this is trending all in the right direction. Part of it was a new 55-room hotel that opened last year in August. Another really big contributor here, though, are the individual vacation rentals and what they are collecting in room tax as well. So, we think that means a lot of things are on the right track as far as, and I will throw in, those contractors out at the solar project have been a big contributor to this as well. They won't, they won't be back next year, so we have to make sure we do a good job of promoting the community. That also speaks to, sorry, that also...
Greg, if I can, you showed last time we met, the evaluation chart, I think Dave shared with us.
Yes.
That in 2008, and then it started dipping down, now it's going back up. So not only are we having better evaluation, we saw what that happened, we had a 9% improvement in our property tax and stuff, we're seeing an increase here in room tax. So things are moving in the right direction. In fact, this number so far for the first seven months is higher than all of 19 and all of 18, if you think about how crazy that is, and we're only six months in, or seven months in. But all of it's going in the positive direction. So the feedback we're getting from people visiting, I don't know what this is having an impact on businesses, but I'm sure it's having a positive impact on, on restaurants and not only hotels, but also businesses and people buying stuff and people drinking more and doing, and visiting the beach and hopefully spending more money, whether it's at QuickTrip or whether it's at Kurtz's. So this is a very good sign for the economy and the growth of the economy of Two Rivers.
And there is also, I believe, another fall refueling outage out at Point Beach, too. So those come generally after the tourist season, and we can't forget that nuclear plant still contributes a lot to this area's economy. So, some very good news to share. We think that means that our neighbors, and I'm sure they are, should be paying good attention to what Two Rivers wants to see in a new joint tourism services agreement. I'll just mention that changes, or we received in mid-August a draft that the Manitowoc City Attorney volunteered to prepare based on joint meetings with representatives of the two cities and the VCB. We spent an extensive amount of time, about three hours, at the last Room Tax Commission meeting here, going over that draft agreement. Manitowoc has a markup in hand. Mayor Nichols, I didn't see when he has scheduled it, but let me know last week that he's scheduling a meeting of their Room Tax Commission this week to review the feedback from Two Rivers to get back to us. Because honestly, we informally set a goal when we first sat down to talk about a new agreement of having something at least in an adoptable form by September 1st. Well, guess what? It's September 7th. We still don't have it. We really, really need to get this thing wrapped up in the month of September because there's a whole 2022 to be planning for and laying the groundwork for.
I think, Greg, it is public knowledge that Manitowoc has sold the existing location of the visitor center, so soon we have to scramble for a new visitor center location. And that has yet to been, the address has been finalized yet, so there's a lot of questions that we're reviewing to make sure that this thing is, is fair to both communities, equally fair. We think together we're stronger, but if it's got to be a balanced teeter totter, so we're both of us benefit from all these open details.
It's like the movie that's out right now, R-E-S-P-E-C-T. So, we need to have respect for one another in that. Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know if it's officially out, but what you just mentioned might be one of the worst-kept secrets in Manitowoc County.
It's ordered at city council, so it's public knowledge.
Yeah. Related to community tourism and promotion, and, and I'd say one of the, one of the very best tangible outcomes, one of, one of several, from the branding effort was the, was the establishment of ExploreTwoRivers.com. And that, that site is maintained primarily by staff from various departments, the city manager's office, the library, Parks and Rec, all have input into it, economic development. Lisa, my assistant, asked me to share this. She and Dave Dazey, our capable IT guy who's, who's beaming us out to the community, are delving more into the metrics that are available, the analytics that are available off the site. This graphic on, on the right hand of this slide, as I understand it, shows of people that visited ExploreTwoRivers.com, where did they also go for page views? And no big surprise, if you're looking at the last seven days, Kites Over Lake Michigan was pretty popular. 1,155 people that came to Explore Two Rivers went over to kites. They also went to Parks and Rec's website. They went to Unique Flying Objects, of course Chow Chong is, is integral and the kite boss for kites. We were a little confused at first. I said, did this go to the trash or what? But trash, PHP is the information on trash and garbage and recyclables collection on the city's homepage. And I can only assume based on things I saw on Facebook, I don't spend a lot of time there, but that I saw this weekend, typical holiday time, people were saying, what's the deal with Monday's trash pickup? What's the day with, what's the deal with Tuesdays? And somehow, 163 people who were on Explore Two Rivers also ended up over on the city, the official city website, learning about trash collection. So, we hope to better refine our understanding, at least IT and Lisa's understanding of these metrics, so we can share them and, and continue to optimize the performance of this site.
We'll still do quarterly updates from the branding and marketing. We do it every quarter on Facebook, LinkedIn, not LinkedIn, Instagram, Twitter, as well as this site, and where they're going and what we're doing and what we're learning from it. So that'll continue to be an ongoing update for city council from the branding committee.
Right, I think this has, this is also a good example of where we have something to offer our joint marketing efforts with Manitowoc and the Visitor Bureau because this, we hear a lot of good things about the Explore Two Rivers website. That concludes my report with a, with a shot of the, the finest and cleanest best-known beach in Wisconsin. Oh, I did want to mention, you may have heard concerns, and again, out on social media in the community, a lot of discussion about coyote sightings within the city, areas on the north end, on the east side. We, our, our police department has been in touch with Parks and Rec about it. From what we understand, we're, it's not unusual, according to DNR, to see coyotes who've become very accustomed to living in our midst or having us living in their midst to be moving around at this time of year looking for food sources. We do plan to share out on Facebook some basic tips from Wisconsin DNR, and I've also got one here from the Wisconsin Humane Society about measures to try to discourage coyotes from hanging out in your neighborhood, like not putting food out for the stray kitties that might be wandering the neighborhood, making sure... making sure your, your trash, your garbage is properly secured, uh, picking up, if you have apple trees or other things in your yard, picking, picking up that fruit because coyotes are omnivores, they're pretty opportunistic feeders, whether it's a stray cat or some fruit in your backyard or your garbage. Uh, we coexist with them and we have for a long time, but it, it is important to, to also get the word out that we don't need to make dependence on people and living in our city environment any more attractive than they already find it. So, we do hope to share that. Um, and, uh, we're trying to stay, stay on top of the situation and the concerns there. So, that, uh, that concludes my report.
Greg, I just want to make a comment. We started with Kurt's resignation. And I have to tell you that, um, Kurt and his wife have made an endless contrib, uh, this limitless contribution to the community, doing so many things, including the branding and marketing. And you have helped us in so many different ways, not because you needed to, because you've got your own financial dynasty going with other businesses. You don't need to do that, but invest in the community, give it all the time. I just want to publicly thank you. It didn't benefit you. You've done so much to help us, along with a lot of other people that are engaged in your direction and your, uh, efforts. And I appreciate it and we're gonna miss you. And Adam, you can do a good job, but you're gonna have your boot, your shoes, big shoes to fill. I know you can do it. So hopefully we can continue in this positive mode and, and look for the things that benefit Two Rivers and what's good about it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, we'll move on to number ten. Presentation of minutes, we have two of them. A motion to waive the reading and adopt those minutes. On reports, we have nine different minutes of meetings. Uh, we're looking for, uh, that to also be approved. Uh, the application for temporary Class B license, we have one. Application for commercial garbage hauler's license, we have one. Application for taxi license, we have one. And finance reports, we have four. So a summary of the verified bills for the month of August twenty twenty-one is three million, twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-six cents, and a motion to receive and file those. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda or the various action items recommended. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion regarding what's in front of us on the consent agenda?
I would just mention, because I forgot to earlier, you see the, um, application from Two Rivers Main Street for a special Class B. They, they have been asked to provide the, um, um, beverage services, which, on a, as a cash bar essentially for an anniversary event at Metalware. I believe that's a, a delayed due to COVID one-hundredth anniversary celebration.
That the tent sale coming up, Greg?
And yes, the other thing was Metalware will be holding a tent sale on the same Saturday, September eighteen.
September eighteenth, I believe.
As ethnic festivals. So if you're downtown for ethnic festival, or even if you're not, get on over to Metalware for the tent sale.
Buy, buy a Nesko and buy a T-shirt and have, have a beverage someplace. It sounds like a good time. All right, anything else? All in favor of the consent agenda and the motion put forward? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, we're moving on to number eleven, which is city council formal items. We have one resolution expressing the gratitude and appreciation of William Zarn. Is that how you say it?
Zarn.
Zarn's contribution to the safety of young citizens of this community. Uh, I'm gonna have a motion to read and adopt that resolution. So we'll first get a motion and second, and then we'll go ahead and read the resolution. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to read and adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bonnie. Uh, let's go ahead and have Chief Colmeyer, please, read. And I believe it's in our packages. So you have, it's probably the last thing on, you, you got page number one twenty-five, if you guys want to follow along. Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, William Zarn was. Resolution expressing gratitude and appreciation for William Zarn's. Whereas William Bill Zarn began his employment with the city of. Whereas. Vote. Whereas carried out his duties with dedication to the safety. So reported. As Bill. Guardianship, seventeen years, character is on. Therefore be. Expresses gratitude. Oh.
Thank you, chief. Any questions or discussion before we do a roll call vote? Dean and Jamie?
Mark Benner.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye. Um, thank you. Um, it's always tough to lose somebody who unexpectedly is lost and helped the community so much. So, thank you to the Zarn family.
For twelve, for information only, personnel finance meeting, Mark just brought it up, September ninth, six o'clock. Please join us. It's the start, really, of the long journey towards budgeting. So we could really use input if people want to come and see the process. It is a long September and October. Um, city council regular meeting, September twentieth, and city council work session, September twenty-seventh. Um, before we go into closed session, I will be watching and I will be attending, as now I'll be part of the public input to the council. So, there you go. Closed session, Mr. Buckley, do we need to go into one?
Uh, yes. Specifically, I wanted to talk about, uh, an update on interest in the former Paragon property and an update on, uh, some possible property purchases. I, there's a possibility, if it pleases the council, that there might be a council action on reconvening and open. We don't televise the balance of the meeting from now forward, but if any members of the public that are here want to stay, or if anybody wants to come down, the council will reconvene and open for possible action.
Thank you for that, Greg.
Yep.
So if you've all heard, we may reconvene an open session. Thank you again, Two Rivers, for paying attention and participating tonight, whether it be on Facebook or on cable. And we appreciate it. And I want to thank you again for all your support and your ability to continue to stay true to two and push this econo, this city forward. Closed session, the city council reserves the right to enter in the closed session for Wisconsin stats nineteen point eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investment in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Tonight, there are three things listed. Discuss possible city assistance to economic development project, discuss possible property sale, the former Paragon Electric Property Update here, and discuss the possible property purchase, former Hamilton Property C N Railroad right away as well. So I'm looking for a motion to go into closed. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion before we go to roll call? Jamie, roll call vote, please.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Benner.
Thank you. We're officially in close. If I can get someone to get the door, that'd be great. Um, and if we need, does anybody need a break or do we just power through it?